Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our December 12, 2018 Select Board meeting. We welcome you all. I'd just like to take a moment at the beginning of the meeting, just for a moment of silence, for the firefighter from Worcester that passed this past week, Christopher Roy. So we certainly are thinking of his family, and his family both at home, and who he works with, and the city of Worcester. So certainly, just a moment. Thank you. And I'll call this meeting to order. We have a consent agenda, which are the warrants, P R 1919, P R 1920, P R 1921, P R 1922, P R 1923, A P 1920, A P 1921, A P 1922, A P 1922 dash S, and A P 1923. We also have the minutes of 2018, of 2018. I have motions.
September 18th?
September 18th. September 18th. What did I say?
I don't know.
I don't know. It's September 18th. It was a few months ago.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any public comments this evening?
The 110 Grill?
110 Grill, okay. All right, that will be coming up.
One thing I, well...
Go ahead.
Something, kind of a comment, is, I was reading the paper on Tuesday, I believe, and about the Hadley Bike Share Program. And Hadley was called out in there as maybe being able to participate in that program, which would be maybe putting in a couple stations of the bikes along the bike path or something. And I was just wondering, I'd be willing to contact Wayne Fiden in Northampton and try to just get some details about what that might look like, how much it might cost, what we could maybe do to participate in that value bike share program. I don't know what you guys think about that, taking that on?
Well, it depends on cost.
That's what I mean, yeah. But what you think about looking into it?
We were never approached.
We were never approached.
David and I had actually met with them twice.
You have, okay.
Yeah.
So maybe there's already been?
So, but it was very preliminary, and it wasn't ready for prime time to come to the board.
Is that last year?
Uh, no, this year, actually, right?
Six months ago.
Yeah. So Chris...
During the summer, Chris Curtis.
Thank you. Nice to help.
Nice to be with you, Sharon, that will just thank you.
Well, we... That's what I'm saying, we wasn't really ready for prime time because we didn't have any cost information. So he had...
Was that about September 18th?
We still don't have any cost estimation.
Well, so...
What it would cost us.
Yeah.
So do you want the update?
Sure, hey, go for it. You have something.
It must be an investment, because I see South Hadley did it in front of their police station, and they did it on their village commons. I drove by and seen it.
Should go for it now.
So Chris Curtis approached the town. He actually, he made contact with me because he was working in Amherst, and somebody in Amherst suggested, you know, contacting somebody on the Select Board. So when he made contact with me, I forwarded it to David, and he was just looking for a preliminary meeting to see if we would be interested at all. So this was a while back. David and I had a conversation with him. He really didn't have much information at the time, other than, you know, what do you think? Would Hadley be interested? And David and I said, "Well, you know, we have to go through the Select Board, but sure." You know, it seems to make a lot of sense, because we were seeing the stations pop up. At that point, they were just being installed in Northampton and the like. So he said that he would then follow up with us, now that he knew we were going to talk. And a couple of months back, as David said, we met with him. And at that point, he had a brochure, he had information saying that the station itself actually is manufactured in Canada, David, right?
I've lost track of that detail.
Yeah, so it's actually a Canadian manufacturer. But that in order to participate, what other towns were doing was they were getting sponsors, because there absolutely is a quest. And we would need to figure out a way to make it happen. I think East Tampton had just indicated interest at that point. He was working with the new mayor of East Tampton. And Nicole LaChapelle was working on an agreement with him. And, you know, we said, again, it seemed like something that we would be interested in. Of course, it was going to come down to cost, and we needed to figure out how to make that happen. And did he expect us to approach area businesses? Or how was that all going to work? So, again, it was a pleasant meeting, but that was in the details. So he hadn't taken it that one step further. So he just wanted to know if it was okay, that he indicated that Hadley might be interested. And we said, "Might, yes," knowing it had to come back to the full board. And that the intent was to have further conversation.
Okay.
So that, from my standpoint, am I missing anything, or is that what you were...
You have more than I do.
Okay, yeah.
I haven't worked on this project for months.
Yeah, so to that end...
They're at the top of the list, aren't they?
No, no, it's not something in the top.
No, but it's something, they have to apply for grants and things like that, so, I mean, I'm more than happy, if that's something you're keen with your interest in, please.
Yeah, 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 I'm interested in that kind of stuff. I think, you know, there's enough businesses in Hadley that would be willing to sponsor something like that. So, I mean, having something like that, the mall, Whole Foods, you know, all that would be great, so.
They were talking about the mall, and in front of the library, and David and I had mentioned at that point, we were hopeful that we would get a new library and senior center.
I've seen the bikes, like, outside of the quarters, on their bike rack.
Yeah.
And actually, they complained to me at the quarters, because they're like, "Yeah, they just leave these bikes here, and, you know, then they have to come pick them up." But it would be great if there was a station around, I think, for business as well, so...
Yeah, but they said the mall definitely was a high, high impact location.
Yeah.
Maybe, like, maybe the quarters would be interested in it.
Yeah, maybe, maybe if you can forward me the email, and then I'll follow...
They do have bike rentals at the other end of the quarters, in that building there. People, how many take bikes from there?
Oh, that's a D C R program for people for access.
Maybe the D C R would like to get involved.
Maybe, yeah, D C R would be interested too.
They'd like to be the ones here, because they have the bikes there already.
Yeah, so, I think there's a lot of options there, so...
Options for them to look at.
Okay. Yeah, so I will forward you all the contact info I have.
Yeah, and then I can keep you updated.
That'd be great, yeah.
CPA funding things, perhaps, for the recreational portion?
Possibly, yeah.
Yeah, I can talk to Andy about it.
Right, because I know their applications are coming up, we found out today, the end of December for next year.
Yeah. Might be tricky to fit that in, but...
Right.
Well, he did say, "Even if you didn't think you could have the application for December 31st, please contact him."
Okay, yeah, I'll give them a call.
And even though you might initiate it with CPA money, then who would continue to pay for it?
And that's the details of whether we, what do we, yeah, is it something that we have to continuously pay?
And the maintenance, the maintenance falls to the town, right? So there's an initial equipment?
Okay, just, just what we need right now.
Yeah.
Great, more, more things, more in our budget. Sorry, being a negative, it's a problem, but we have a lot on our plate right now.
Yeah.
Grants would be nice.
Yeah, see what can be. We can't make any decisions until we know what we're making right now.
Very true. Okay, so, David, you want, you've got about seven minutes, you want to do something. I'm keeping you on track. We've got a 7:15 appointment, so...
We, you know, we had a big update last week, so nothing much has changed. One of the things that we have been working on a lot, and this is work that's fallen to Dan Zadonic in the Sessions Office of Prime Airline, is the recap sheet for FY 2019. Apparently, the Department of Revenue has made some changes in the way that we declared the enterprise fund revenues and expenses. Change that we did not anticipate at the springtime, falltime meeting, and so we might have changed our voting a little bit, in order to make the accounting a little bit more easy. I think we've found the work around, so that you can get everything submitted this week. So I don't think we have to worry about setting the tax rate as of this afternoon. But we may think about how we set up the omnibus budget for the annual time meeting. We may want to do this in a couple votes rather than one omnibus vote, so, and that'll make it easier for FY 2020 tax rate setting time. Other than that, North Hadley Village Hall sale update. We did receive a bid today for the real estate services for North Hadley Village Hall. Bid is under review, and a recommendation will be presented to the Select Board meeting in January. Everything else is moving along. We did have a big meeting with the Safety Committee today, and we focused almost exclusively on the new OSHA requirements that are coming due on February 1st, 2019. And there's a lot to do. It's going to take us three to five years to go through all the upgrades of the OSHA requirements and have the solos. We're working towards a goal. Department of Labor's safety will, will work with us and not penalize us for working in compliance. Adult-use marijuana update. The Planning Board is working on zoning bylaws. The Board of Health had a public hearing back in November, and they have the top-to-do regulations, which are advertised and posted at this point. Grant administration. House Bill 4750 and House Bill 4751, these are the two special acts of legislation that we passed at the town meeting to change the positions of appointed, elected town tax collector and town treasurer to appointed positions. They've been working their way through the legislative process, but they seem to have gotten stuck on the third, getting to the third reading in the Senate. So working with the Office of Senator-elect Comerford and Representative Seibek and Representative-elect Carey, they're taking action on this, and I expect a favorable vote in the next week or two on those two important issues. How long do I have to time? All right.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. Chris and I went to the P V P C hearing on the rural policy development with the state. This is a measure of the labor administration, to see if they can't put together a policy manual. Having to do with all sorts of things, transportation, public safety, financing, education, economic development, community development, construction improvements, whatever, whatever is unique to rural communities or maritime communities, which are, don't, either manifest in the same way in urban environments, or don't even apply in urban environments. So, as a byproduct of that meeting and I, Chris and I received the solicitations for the direct local technicality rates, which have a due date of January 11th. We can submit more than one application. These have been very helpful in the past. I'm considering and exploring developing three applications. One for the affordable housing study that the Planning Board brought to us a couple of months back, two, implementation of financial practices associated with Department of Revenue recommendations, and, nevertheless, community compact agreement. And then some energy projects that I would like to explore. You'll have an opportunity to vote on these in the January meeting.
Jim Maxmoski, excuse me, today also mentioned he might be looking to apply for one, perhaps for that FEMA mapping project, or our subcommittee was mentioned for P V P C.
The other thing that I'm kicking around, and, you know, I shouldn't be submitting five applications unless we've talked this with the P V P C first, but we just learned today that one of the things the OSHA regulations are going to impel us to do, not propel us, is to develop a safety coordinator position, somebody who is going to be responsible for the safety conditions of all the buildings, all the policies, all the practices, all the departments. Just one more thing to add to an already over full plate. We may be able to handle that as a regional service, so maybe band together three towns to share a position that will be responsible for making sure that we're compliant with the OSHA regulations. So that's an idea that I developed this afternoon, talking to the Safety Committee.
Okay.
We've got a couple of things coming up. I'm going to talk about the special election December 18th, two items on there, Top Truck and B W, and kitchen equipment for Hopkins Academy. That's December 18th over Hopkins Academy. Polling hours are from noon to eight, and everybody is encouraged to exercise and write their vote.
Let's have a good turnout, just like the last election. We're all taking bets on you, so...
Sure.
We've got a bull going, how many votes are we going to get?
And I'm the most optimistic, so...
All right, hope to see you all there.
I'll leave the other announcements to you.
Okay. All right, well, a couple minutes passed, we'll do our 7:15 public hearing on 110 Grill, all alcohol licensed restaurant. And we have with us...
Just in time.
I'm sorry, I'm a very nondescript building, I'm trying to get circles, sorry about that.
Nondescript building, wow.
Well, it's because I saw the big church, so I just thought I'd just go into the church.
The church, yeah.
Because I kept going up that way, then I was at the high school. I tried to, like, loop it around, went to the library.
Well, the panic was setting in.
It was well after me, too. I was just blowing his phone up, so, thank you for, thank you.
Well, welcome.
For the record, attorney Kevin Erickson, on behalf of the 110 Grill, M F Hadley LLC, with me tonight, Patrick McClellan.
Yep, and I'm the area director with 110 Grill.
We are here tonight before you for an application for a all-alcohol restaurant liquor license, a new license, as well as a change of hours to allow for a Sunday brunch and service during that Sunday brunch period. If you're not familiar with the 110 Grill concept, we are a locally owned and operated company that started out in Chumseret, Massachusetts, on Route 110. And in 2014, we have grown to 16 current locations that are open now in Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and New York. And we have, I believe, two more slated to open in the next two months, and another eight to open next year right now on the books. So we're growing fast, we're proud to say now that, you know, we employ over 2,000 folks, most of which are local to the restaurant areas where we open up. We're privately held, we're not a large corporation, and we're not a big, we don't consider ourselves a big chain. We consider ourselves, you know, a quality American cuisine that emphasizes freshness. And as I said, you know, we have an open kitchen concept, great attention to detail, and we're excited to be joining this community in the Mountain Farms project.
Open concept, meaning you can watch the cooks cook?
Yes, yeah. And the kitchens all open.
Any seating at the...
Yeah, there's actually five, six-top booths that sit right there, and there's the high-top, so you'll be able to watch them. Keeps them, keeps them minor toast, and it keeps the language down, too.
Sounds exciting.
Yeah, and the other thing that we really focus on is allergens as well. So over 90% of our menus are gluten-free, and we can address pretty much any allergy that's out there, because we are scratch kitchens. So that's like one of our real big catalysts for our popularity.
And of course, you must buy local produce.
We source a lot of it local, we deal with Costa out of Boston, but Boston, excuse me, Costa actually buys from a lot of farms right out in this area, so...
Safe serve, all your people?
Servers, managers, yep.
Managers.
Yep, it's all part of our whole training program, and then we utilize hot schedules. So what it does, we can put in the date, so we get like a 60-day notice if someone's starting to expire, as opposed to waiting for us to catch up, so we try to stay ahead of that. And the same thing with Serve Safe for Food.
Are you the manager, the owner, the...
I'm the area director, so I oversee a few of them. So currently, we're in the process of holy opening.
That's opening up.
So, yes.
This week, isn't it?
Yes, they're just up there.
This, this week?
Yep.
Will you be hiring a local manager?
Yeah, yep, all our managers are local, so, we just, I live in Marble Mass, it's actually, or here, well, Holyo's just about an hour, so, but all my managers live in this area, so they're holy open too. Once we get an established local manager, we'll come back before this board for a change of manager application, and likely take Patrick off of the liquor license. But as part of our typical process, because we're not yet hiring for this location, yeah, this is, this is the route.
And what's the expected opening date?
Probably the summer of 19?
19?
Yes. We'd like to get ahead of it.
Before the students come back, yeah, right?
Yes.
Be nice.
Yeah, try to get a few under us.
And this is going to be where, like, the Alpine and all that's going to be? Is that where the location is? I wasn't quite sure where the location is. Were they, they're discussing it all, right?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
I think the second building's on its way up now.
Okay, yeah.
Sounds great to me.
Jennifer, any, any conversation with either of the chiefs, or...
I've checked with both chiefs and the billing inspector, everybody is okay. Obviously, we're asking for it to be held until they have their certificate of occupancy. The abutters have been notified, there's been no response from any of the abutters. We did place legal ad, everything's in place and ready to go. They are going to fill out their applications for their C V and their entertainment license, but since the alcohol license is sort of the first big step, that's why we're moving on first, and they're going to submit the others. I believe, I spoke to Lili, who said they're actually sending them in tomorrow. So they are moving on them, and nobody's had any concerns, and...
What's the entertainment you're going to be having there?
Do TVs. We have a commercial Sirius station, and on occasion, we have a live entertainer. It's typically acoustic guitar and vocals, so...
I've been many times, actually, to other locations. We really don't have anything like it around here, so it'd be great for, you know, bride of showers, birthday parties, and that kind of thing, too. It's just nice.
Nice.
And we're very excited.
Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve, subject to, you know, again, future approvals.
Second.
Second, and this is for an all-alcoholic license, correct?
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
In favor? Welcome.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time, I appreciate it.
Good luck with your rest of your project.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck in Holyo.
Stop on a holy, because he has a chance of about us.
We will, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you, thank you.
All right, so we're going to have to wait till 7:30, do we, or...
We do that.
Are we done?
All right.
All right, we're fine.
Let's, let's go. We have Linda and Sanderson and David Appisenthal to fill us in on our borrowing. Thank you.
Thank you. Last time we were here, we were talking about whether we should go ahead and borrow in, this month, in December, and you gave the authorization to go ahead and do that. We went out for a $2.84 million bond, ban, which is a bond anticipation note. We went out to borrow short-term, till next July, when we will be doing a bond. But at this point, we're doing that level of ban, 2.84, which will cover all of the senior center expenses through this fiscal year, and all of the anticipated fire of substation expenses through this fiscal year. We'll deal with the library a bit later, we'll have other opportunities to borrow for them. But that gave us a good amount that we were borrowing this year, in this calendar year.
And we got the rate for 2.45?
2.45? Yeah, the only thing I would add is I think that both Linda and I were very pleased with the number and strength of the bids, four full bids and two partial bids, including Greenfield Savings Bank, which is new to the municipal world. Glad to see them participating, but, and we're hoping that...
He stands, he's grown quite large, too, actually. He stands, he's grown quite large.
Yes, 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 sir.
Where is Eastern Bank out of?
They're in, their trading desk is in Boston, they're headquartered in Landmass, but they are very active in the municipal world.
And have been for a long time.
Yes, they have been, yes.
Have we used them in the past year?
I think that probably they've fought short-term ban in the past, maybe not in the recent past, but they've been active for many years.
Plus, we're going to vote with the whole, if it drives, for sure.
It was quite a bit lower, I mean, really was, it was an easy decision, so...
And so we need to entertain a vote?
Apparently, we don't need to vote.
We don't have to vote.
It's your option, if you want to take a vote approving the award of the notes to Eastern Bank, that's your option.
I would, that would be a claim.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid to Eastern Bank.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just while, while they're here, can I, may I ask a question?
Sure.
That's unrelated, but it's financially relating. David, at the department head meeting today, there was discussion about the setting of the tax rate, and it wasn't clear on what exactly the concern was and why we're delayed.
So I touched upon that in the town administrative report, that we're working on the tax recapping regulation, which pretty much all week, and today, we did experience trouble making things balance, and it's partly because, you know, people's numbers didn't jive, and there's the usual back and forth of that, but the change of the Department of Revenue and the way that they account for the enterprise funds makes it difficult for us to balance in a meaningful way, so...
So this is balancing between the town of Hadley's books and the, what, the Department of Revenue's?
This would be the recap sheet, the way that the costs and the revenues are broken down between the different schedules for the enterprise funds. It wasn't coming up right. The number kept on moving between half a million and 16,000, and it all had to do with the way that the enterprise administrative charges are handled in the Department of Revenue revised rules for accounting.
Okay.
All right, we think that we've solved it. We'll get to the numbers again tomorrow morning.
Okay, I mean, I was just clearly taking off of the fact that our, you know, Sue seemed to be expressing concern about the timeframe with which to get this done.
Right, we need to get the bills out the door by December 31st, so...
Right, and we can't do that if we don't have an approved tax rate.
Well, right, so we're going to be, I think we're going to be submitting the recap tomorrow, so that should do it.
We being Dan?
Dan, Dan Zadonic.
But it looks like our rate of 1236 is going to work.
It's going to work.
Okay.
Because the issues are in the enterprise fund, not in the general firm. I'll certainly... Is that all part of the quarterly billing, that's the revolving part that's messing you up right now? No.
This is just the normal, annual...
Oh, okay, yeah. If there's trouble, I'll let you know about it.
Yeah, I mean, if we need to, I wasn't, it wasn't clear to me if the trouble was on the Department of Revenue's side, so we, we have everything we need, it's just our communication with the Department of Revenue and reconciling how they're interpreting to get their agreement.
Right.
Okay.
So we checked all of our numbers, Dan and I checked our numbers, we agree. We, it's just how we report the administrative charges, I think that's the problem.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'd appreciate it if you'd let us know.
Yep.
And if there's an ongoing issue, because if that were to go beyond the 31st, that's a problem.
Yeah, that would be a problem. And again, Dan and I worked on this, and Susan as well, this afternoon, and again, I think we've got it at this point, so, I'll be meeting with them tomorrow morning, and if there is a problem, I'll let you know.
Thank you, I just, you know, okay.
While you were here, just to reply? We don't have a tax rate to pay the bill, you're just taking out.
We want to pay this debt, once we take it out, and, yes, and it does affect...
These don't come due until fiscal plan anyways.
Oh, right, right.
Yes, but we want to protect our, our ratings, though, so...
Yeah, that was why, because it actually came up today, that when we're looking at the bond rating and things like that, this is something that we don't want to have go astray.
And are we still, continuing disclosure? You had suggested we're going to get that done early.
Well, I think we're trying to figure out how we're going to stage the next few financings. The next certain need for disclosure, other than the annual continuing disclosure, would be the bond issue, which we probably sell in June and maybe settle after the 1st of July. If there was a large enough note issue, we might need... If there was a large enough note issue, we might need to have a disclosure document ahead of that, but in any case, in the spring, the town will be updating its annual continuing disclosure.
Right.
So these are all topics I would expect I'll be meeting with the town administrator and the treasurer probably sometime next month and kind of bring some more clarity as to what the activities will be over the next several months.
Right. Things keep changing. I mean, we'll, we'll see what the election, whether those pass next week and then we'll have to figure that into the borrowing and by the time, over the next few months, our next note renewal would be in March, the one we took out earlier, and we'll roll that over. Well, again, at that point, or well, before that point, be looking, are these projects really on schedule and what they expect? Do we need that much money at this time? Do we need more? So this is going to be evolving as we go.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Thanks for your question.
Did you sign papers?
Oh, yeah, we did.
I did, okay. All right, thank you very much.
We'll set the role.
Good night.
All right, I'm gonna go out of order since Suzanne's here. We'll get you out of here on timely fashion tonight.
Gee, thanks.
Senior Center, Library and Fire Substation. I have nothing on Fire Substation for tonight. We continue to meet, we don't meet now again until January. And Susan, what do you, Suzanne, what do you have for us this evening?
So we're, we had our hearing with Conservation Commission last night, which went really well. They closed the hearing, gave approval, contention on some ideas that they wanted based on the buffer zone and the east boundary, saying some native plantings with a good root system would be recommended back there, just some shrubs and bushes because it does grow it now. But other than that, you know, they, they went over the drainage, they went over runoff, they went over everything and were pleased. So that's an on issue, moving forward with that. I know there's been paperwork going back and forth insofar as getting documentation to the planning board. I think before you, you have tonight, the ad service number four for the architects to go ahead and do the bid documents so that we're ready to roll, to put those out in January. This is the next piece in the process, a formality, if you will. They were revised, need to be revised and kind of starting, not quite from scratch, but because the building changed a little bit, both in size and in some layout, they need to go back and resize and recalculate all of the, both structural and infrastructure and so far as the sizing of heating and cooling, all of those things. So everybody's gonna be going back and recalculating everything so that we have the right bid documents to go out, but we're still on target for right now. I actually have a meeting tomorrow with one of the architects and the interior designer. I've asked for a list on what they were included in the furnishings, fixtures and equipment of the new building so that we can take a walk through what we currently have and see what will need to come with us, not anticipating a whole lot, but still, we wanna make sure all the bases are covered. So after we get that settled, we'll be able to start clearing out some of the stuff, packing up old files in preparation. I also have been invited to talk with the parish council at Most Holy Deemer on Monday night to kind of tell them what we do, the space that we use, to see if it's gonna fit for both of us. They weren't clear on, on anything other than that we wanted to rent, show us that we'd be happy to go over and sit down and answer any questions with them, tell them what we do. And I said to expect it going back and forth, some things might not work for you, then we'll adjust, we'll go back and things like that. So I think they were happy that I was willing to kind of clear up details because there hasn't been any direct communication yet. And then they will apparently make a recommendation if they so see that it would be a good fit to the diocese and communication will continue through David Nixon and Colbrook royalty and the diocese, so.
Do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, other than, you know, making a motion for the proposal, but they can wait. That would be my only thing, or I can do that now, we can go now. Okay.
Sure.
We could just make a motion that we approve EDM's proposal to do the construction documentation for the resized Senior Center.
Sorry. Any further discussion on that? All set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I just ask a question as a follow-up that actually goes back to the North Hadley Substation? So at the last meeting, you let us know that the, the subcommittee, the substation committee had voted not to sell any of the land and you said you were gonna make sure the, the people who had been requesting were notified. Did that happen?
No, it didn't. We got a email from Phil Plon about the OPM expressing his concern about the barn crossing the boundary line by a small amount inches, I think it is.
This is like point three or something.
Something like that.
Wasn't very much.
So I emailed you to say, do you want to reconsider? Is this something that we need to hold off on? So I have not followed through on that, waiting for resolution of that issue.
I think he wanted us to talk with our lawyer and see what we needed to do on it since it's been on the property all these years and since the property was divided with Kretsky prop, no, with Hanuski's property to begin with. So how that all got divided, I'm not sure. So I think we need to further investigate with the tax, or to the lawyer who did the-
With our attorney?
Yes.
Okay. So pending the outcome of that, which I'll bring back to the subcommittee, I'm not going to notify anybody about your vote because we may have to take a different direction. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I'm just asking, just because-
Because of where the barn is, it's like a corner that sits on the other piece of property, so I'm not sure.
Adverse possession.
Yeah, adverse possession.
So the barn isn't actually on the property?
The barn is on our property except for a corner. So we have to see what we need to do before we can-
Chainsaw.
Huh?
Chainsaw.
Take off that corner or just slice it out.
That has happened in Hadley.
Oh, no kidding, yes.
Are you familiar with it, is it three inches or three tons?
It's, I, I don't know exactly what it is.
It's three tenths, I think, of three.
It's so tiny that you could just, but it's supposed to be fifteen, you just go, it's all, it's been there forever, so it's not a big deal.
Yeah. So what, like, I'm gonna do everything legally that we're supposed to be doing and just be clear on it. Yeah.
The other thing too, we talked about last week was the, I don't know how to call this person, clerk of works, program coordinator, that kind of thing about these projects. Program manager. I think we need to get the title nailed down, but, um-
We have received that email from David.
Oh, we did, okay. Oh, right here.
Yeah.
David Tudor sent this today.
Okay.
Hot off the press.
Okay.
Hot off the press, that would give us some time to look at everything. It certainly is quite lengthy.
Yeah.
It covers everything and, you know, we wanna make sure that the clerk of the works that we're looking at, which would be a building program clerk of the works, doesn't interfere actually with the two other clerk of the works that are hired by the other firms.
I was talking to David before this meeting and what he wanted me to suggest to you is that the municipal building committee can set up a meeting for next Tuesday. We can help review this if you so desire, you can handle it. It's whatever you guys want, but if you want our input, we can certainly go through that for you.
And he had said that you had not seen it yet, the whole municipal building committee.
That's correct, yeah, no, not-
So personally, I would like you to go over it as a committee.
Yep, we will do that then.
And look at the bullet points that David had pointed out on this, on what he thought should be entailed in it and if the two cross over between what the other OPMs and clerks do for the other two.
Yeah, there's certainly, that's the concern and we wanna make sure that the line is drawn in what we're doing.
We don't wanna duplicate what they're doing, but we wanna make sure our side is covered in that we're, you know, being watchful of the whole projects too. It doesn't hurt to have an extra set of eyes on the project as we've learned from past experiences.
And then the other issue that was raised at this morning's department head meeting is just making sure, there was some concern expressed, I think Jim Maximowski mentioned that other towns who've hired this type of position have run into issues where they were deemed to be a municipal employee as opposed to a contract employee. But in, one of the things I made note of in David Tudor's write-up and then just some conversation he had is he, he's expecting that it's like a twenty to thirty hour a week type position and if that's the case, that might be beneficial to making sure it's a contract as opposed to an employment situation where all they're doing for several months is, you know, working on behalf of the select board, so.
And I think that's what we did years ago with the building committee for school and public safety, we, that wasn't a full-time position.
Yeah, that was, that was my part and that was twenty, twenty hours, twenty, twenty five hours.
There's pros and cons to that because they can come back and collect unemployment and things of that nature after they-
If they're deemed to be, yeah.
If they're deemed to be a town employee at the time of their-
Yeah, so James, you know, it was interesting, just making sure that, you know, we're careful on that front. We are clear.
My only comment on this, this list, and I know it's preliminary, it would be that in my mind, the bullet points involving coordination of the move are a lot more critical than transferring utilities and accounts and things like that because I think that should fall under our project managers for the actual projects, so. And I think that if you can narrow it down to just coordinating the move a little bit, we might be able to save a little money on the expertise that's involved.
And what I brought up at the department head meeting, a suggestion is I did talk to Larry Tuttle, the architect that we have on call, and he's more than willing to help out in any way upfront, just to get things moving because of the critical timeframe. That's a suggestion. If we, if you want to, we can talk about bringing him on. We have, we have nineteen thousand and change in that budget right now, maybe like fifteen we can play around with, but it, it might be some way of getting things going and as, as we saw, there was difference of opinion on where some people can fit and that he might be instrumental on that. It's something we could think about, getting him on board. He can start looking at that stuff.
Well, if you guys are, are meeting-
We'll meet Tuesday.
Meet Tuesday and then we won't meet again until, what, the first week of January?
January ninth.
January ninth.
Yeah, I mean, and realistically, not a lot's gonna happen-
Between-
Or not the holidays anyway, so would, would we be in a position then maybe on the ninth to pull the trigger on something?
Sure.
Is there one person that the municipal building, on your board, that we can talk to if we have things that we wanna bring up in the meantime before that night with regard to anything that we might be talking with Larry, some suggestions or what have you? Who should we be approaching first?
Be happy to be that contact person, come to your meetings a couple times or, you know, if somebody else wants to do it as well, I can volunteer, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll just reach out if there's-
Yeah.
We'll do that.
So if, if possible, we'll have, be able to vote on this on January ninth, I guess.
That'd be great.
In order to move forward with actually hiring someone and getting them.
Yeah, because we, at that point, we really need to pull the trigger quickly.
Yeah, and in the meantime, we'll be critiquing this, bringing back some suggestions, getting your suggestions back and then possibly, you know, looking a little bit further with regard to placement within this building, giving, again, some more suggestions on what might, might be possible.
Can I just throw out there, if, if we do have somebody and he is good at conceptual work, I don't know if it'd be worth spending, you know, something less than ten hours between now and that meeting, just looking at the planning board, you know, what their needs are, just some different areas, different office space and kind of really, kind of solidifying some of that so that when we do decide on the next step, we kind of have a plan for what we're gonna do instead of just deciding at that point what we're gonna do.
I thought we did at the last meeting decide where everybody was going.
Yeah, we did, but there are, I mean, there is concern of the planning board not thinking they're not gonna be able to fit all their stuff over here and where they're gonna fit their-
There's a lot of discussion at the, that Jim Maximowski brought up at the department head meeting, but I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be fine and, and what we talked about at the department head meeting was the fact that whoever winds up being this coordinator position, that everybody will have the opportunity to be fully interviewed, you know, to make sure that, you know, their, their voice is heard directly and I think there's concern about, you know, us making a decision on their behalf and not understanding what the needs really are, just, you know, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I think, but sometimes you need to talk people through-
Yeah, but I think everybody needs to understand this is temporary.
Right.
Until we, you know, everybody's just gonna have to crunch, this is crunch time. Everybody's just gonna have to make do with whatever we can do for them and hopefully it works for everybody, but that's, that's our goal right now is just to make sure everybody has a place to meet, to put their things, you know, it may not be perfect, but at least it will be something.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're all there at this point. It's just a Christian's point.
I'm just trying to-
Some of the people.
And it's the other people that I'm saying to that they need to get on board because we're trying to make things work for them too, so hopefully, you know, we can-
We did it several times, asked for input, there, we did get some input from some, but it's silence from a lot of it.
My only feeling is if we need to rent some kind of storage space for files, just knowing what that is, you know, so we can look at that. I don't know, I don't know-
That was free rent, Christian.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what it is, you know. I don't know what it is, but yeah, I think there could be-
I think one of the things we have to realize is there is a concern for some security on some of the stuff and quite honestly, we need to upgrade in that area and that is of importance. I think that is paramount, that we make sure that, that most of these departments feel comfortable with what they have to secure and how it's being secured with so many people going to be employed. Then that was certainly was a concern when we moved out of here and went over there on how, how that stuff was gonna be secured. Luckily, it was so pretty easy because it was in the-
Safety complex.
In the safety complex, we had cops there, so that was a lot easier. We couldn't break into them, but I think there is a concern there and I think it's underlying and it's festering a little bit with some people, but that, that can easily be achieved. And again, we do have Larry, we can just use him on some, some of these quick, quick items too, you know, if something like that comes up, we, we have the ability to use him. He has a lot, he has a lot of staff that he can go back to and ask.
So we'll let, we'll let the municipal building committee-
I'm sorry?
We'll let the municipal building committee hash this over and-
Okay.
And see what they wanna, you know, suggest to us. We're open, certainly open for suggestions.
Okay, so we'll make sure that the ninth is a critical meeting with you guys.
Yes.
Okay.
That would be fine.
Well, if Christians take the arrows.
Or the night do. Great, yeah.
All day long, Christians.
All right, sounds, sounds good.
If you would rather do that, I mean, it's hunting season, so.
Yeah.
What do we wanna wrap up? Wanna go back to?
License renewals.
License renewals, get those out of the way. We wanna make a motion, Jennifer, do you wanna share, everybody is up to date now?
Unfortunately, only five came in since your last meeting. It's a very brief list. I did receive one more today. I also sent out the letters- I did receive one more today. I also sent out the letters based on your vote from the last meeting. Hopefully, I will get everybody else in before the end of the year. Otherwise, after your January ninth meeting, I will come in with a full list of everybody who's not returned their documents or renewals yet.
Make a motion to accept. Who wants to come in?
Five or so.
I'm sorry, I don't have it literally in front of me. I thought it was five that had come in. Maybe it was seven?
There's seven.
Well.
Six.
Six.
Somewhere between five and seven. I, I made the list on, on Monday morning, so I'm sorry, I can't remember exactly who's on there. But they, all of the people who are on that list, all of their documents are turned in, their, their fees are paid. They owe no taxes.
I see six.
Yeah, first one was just a header.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Community communications proposal.
Should I?
That you?
All right.
It's you.
So we started talking about this probably last summer, beginning, or maybe last spring. Right now, we use Code Red as the emergency alert system for the community. And so I've had some exposure with this, using this company in the past in previous places I've lived in larger counties and cities and they've done pretty well. So we looked at a bunch of other options that were out on the market and this Everbridge Nixle seemed to be the best fit for our needs. So I had their representative meet with Chief Mason and Chief Spankable and do a demo and then I think he also did a demo for Molly as well as myself. And basically what this is, is a single system that allows for text, email, push notifications. Once it's set up, streaming onto the, the town website, so all the notifications are in one area. And one of the concerns that I've heard is that the residents were concerned about getting too, too many emails and text messages. And so the option they would have would be to subscribe or not to subscribe to as many departments as they would like. The goal is that if you have kids at Park and Rec soccer and you care about what's happening with soccer practice, then you get the text message or the email saying soccer practice is canceled. If you have people, if you attend whatever event at the senior center and it's canceled because of the snow or whatever, you get those text messages. But obviously, you probably wouldn't get the soccer practice notification. You may, but. So then the ability for the mic and mic to override that and send out the reverse nine one one blast that they need to, to everybody would be there. Basically, the Code Red contract expires at the end of June. I spoke with Chief Spankable and he said that he was okay with transitioning over after he had the demo. This falls under his budget, but he said after he did the demo, there's quite a bit more offerings that this newer system has and so he was comfortable with that. What I suggested was that we move forward with this pro-rated year and start getting some of the other departments up and running and then once the fire department and the police department are comfortable or able to make the transition, they can do that. That way we have a nice overlap in communication ability. That way, you know, Code Red's not expiring June 30th and we're starting with this July 1st. So anyways, that's, that's the summary of it.
But the schools.
This, all the departments could use it. Currently, the Mother's Club funds the school's notification system. It would be up to the school if they wanted to come over and use that Mother's Club funding maybe for something else. I don't know.
But it wouldn't cost anymore. They're just another department.
No, it would not. It would be just another department. The one aspect that I really like about this is that we can bring everybody under one umbrella and that way if we have any incidents with erroneous messages or problem messages being sent out or things like that, we can track it back to where it came from, who it came from. And it's all, there's a good amount of accountability and we're all under one system, one email, one single sign up. So you don't have to sign up with Park and Rec and all these other places and there's nowhere kind of ad hoc email lists that maybe soccer coaches are maintaining or whatever.
It's a comparable fee to their own reason.
So once the fire and the police department come over, it will be just about within a couple hundred dollars, possibly a little bit less, but right about the same as the current Code Red contract. In the meantime, until the police and fire department come over, it'll be cheaper than what we're currently paying for Code Red.
Especially.
But basically, the, the reverse nine one one abilities they require are the expensive parts of something.
Is, is there a way to transition, transition the people that are already signed up for Code Red over to this system so they don't have to, so they don't have like a seamless transition?
So my understanding is no, because people have to opt in to whatever service. And so just like when, you know, with the spam rules that are out there and whatnot, you can't just take someone's email and just say, okay, now you're signed up for this list, even though you consented into the first list and it's the same thing.
Okay.
You would think, okay, but from what he said, the best practice is to have people re-sign up and that way you have a valid list and you don't have.
Fresh addresses.
Addresses and things like that.
And you do have to sign up for it. It's not something you're automatically subscribed to because you're a resident of Hadley or something.
So there's three, my understanding is there's three ways to sign up. Basically, we would get a specific text message number, just like, you know, like a five-digit number that you can text to and say, sign up or whatever. And anybody who texts that number would be automatically added to the email list, right, and to the text message list. You could also sign up through the Nixle website. They give a specific website that you go to, put a link on the homepage or whatever. And then there's also the possibility of, what was it? An app on the website? Is that what the, the webpage person said?
They said that they, they could put a link for Nixle on the subscriber, on their subscribers page, which is apparently what other towns do.
And so there's basically three ways to sign up for it. Probably the best thing would be when, I don't know if we can, if it's allowed or not, but when tax bills or water bills, something like that, put an insert in there and get it out to everybody in town and say, look, these are your options. This is what it does. Sign up. So that way you can get the communications that you need without getting the ones you don't.
So there seems so much, I mean, definitely from the consumer's standpoint, you know, the residents, I think, for all the reasons David stated, it's, it's a better system. But also from the town user's standpoint, it's a much more easy to use, functional, modern version of what we're doing right now. So I mean, for the same amount of money, to me, it's a no-brainer that we would go this route. Again, as long as you know you've gotten the buy-in from the current owners of the, of the system.
So the, one of the abilities that this has that Code Red doesn't is iPOS, which is the alert system that if you ever had like a flash flood warning pop up on your iPhone, that annoying screeching sound, the emergency alert system. This system will utilize that emergency alert access as well. So the police and fire can, can trigger those alerts if they absolutely need to. So there's, there's, there's some new capabilities and basically this brings it all under one umbrella compared to what we have now.
And it's all compatible with what nine one one has with the issue of emergency?
Chief Spankable said that it's compatible. It will do everything Code Red does now plus some. He was concerned about backup systems, like if, you know, their servers in California or whatever went down. Apparently, they have five different locations around the country. There are redundancies, yeah, so if something went down. The other thing he was concerned about was if for some reason he couldn't log in or what happens if he couldn't, you know, had technical issues. And after he talked to the rep, I guess they, he has the ability as a police or fire chief to call somebody and say, here's my password. This is the message I needed to send blast up everybody in town. So it seemed like he was okay with that.
And like right now, what we're using for communication, which is head and shoulders above, above what we did even five years ago is Facebook. So, but if you don't use Facebook, you may not get the update from Mitch saying, you know, there was an accident on Rocky Hill Road, the pole's down or whatever like that. The DPW, Moody Bridge Road closure. I mean, all of that could go through the system and really improve communication.
So the, the county I live in, in Virginia, which is about 200,000 people, they used this system and the way they had it set up with police and fire and their, their DPW was anytime, you know, if you were subscribed, you could get accident notifications of, hey, you know, Bay Road's closed at the bridge over the Fort River because of an accident or, you know, the traffic lights are out at Route 9 and Middle Street. And it was good because it helped to avoid issues.
So your recommendation?
My recommendation would be to accept the proposal from Nixle. So that way we can kind of start the overlap, overlap in startup period, to start transitioning away from Code Red.
Motion to approve, David. Your recommendation. Any further discussion?
Is that, do we have money in the budget that we can use for this or does the chief or anybody have money in their budget? How would we, where would this come from, I guess?
The chief said that, and I asked him this specifically, he said, once he transitioned off of Code Red, he'd be okay with covering the cost of it again because it's about the same amount and it's become out of his emergency management budget. So the issue would be covering the intermediate cost of the first, of the six months or so of the transition period. And I think you're working on finding something.
All right, so we, it's about nineteen hundred dollars for that transition and we would ask for a reserve fund transfer.
For finance.
For either that or line-to-line transfer in the last two months of the fiscal year.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks for doing the labor on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's do Mass DOT agreement, Bay Road, Route 9, traffic signals, Pride Convenience.
All right, so I was contacted by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and apparently part of the project over at Pride is to upgrade the traffic signals at the intersection of Bay Road and Route 9. And I was surprised when I looked at the agreement that it was a three-way agreement between Mass DOT, Pride Convenience Incorporated and the town of Hadley, which I've not seen before. In particular, my name was required for this project. Apparently, they want us to take over the emergency preemption system as installed.
You mean the blinky thing that goes on with the ambulance accessory?
Not, yes, yes, the thing that controls the lights. I had to ask.
So they get the green light when they're going in the direction.
Right, right, right. So first of all, A, I don't have the authority to sign the town up for an infrastructure improvement and ownership, so this needs to go to the select board for review, but it's also something I've never seen before. I was unaware that we had ownership of the emergency preemption system.
I thought the state owned it all along.
It's all Route 9. It's all state highway. It's theirs.
And 47 as well.
No, not the emergency beacons. Emergency beacons, I think, are hers.
I don't think so.
I think those, didn't they install the cameras and all the other stuff down by the bridge and all the beacons? I thought it was all of those.
We've got the, we've got the transponders, the emitters of her installed on the.
On the vehicles.
On the vehicles, but we don't own the overhead wires and apparatus and all that.
So is this their.
Whenever the lights go down or whatever, it's always DOT that comes and fixes them.
Yes, it is.
So this is their way of shifting the cost to us?
Well, starting down at the mall and all the way over to over the bridge. Of course, Northampton has that one over there, but it's actually the state that takes care of that one too.
That's also on Route 9.
Yeah.
So I talked to DPW, the police department and the fire department about this and they all agree that we don't own the system currently. We don't have the expertise or the equipment to handle the maintenance of.
For the money.
For the money. Have we, have we checked with Amherst? Because Amherst, Amherst put the first beacons up.
Well, was the reason that it was Amherst that did that, but they still, it was the state that put them up?
Okay.
And had them installed in their ambulances at that point.
So I don't want to stand in the way of the Pride Convenience Store opening up, but I think this is something that we can't sign.
I don't think this is going to hold up the Pride Convenience Store opening up. It has nothing to do with the Pride.
So my question was, was this a, as part of the agreement, was Pride paying for the improvements to the intersection? And then now they don't want to, so they don't want to, basically Pride doesn't want to cover the cost of.
I think this is coming from Mass DOT.
But did anybody talk to the most recent DOT District Two director?
I've reached out several times to Mass DOT about this. I have not received any response from them. These, this is all in response to your emails to us way back a couple weeks ago?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's the other part that we're.
We just see when it's now.
Is, you know, they're getting, they're, they're asking us as a town to hold up a certificate of occupancy for business on something that's irrelevant to, to the business. It's like, there, there was, there's major issues with their permitting process.
State.
Pride. They split it up into two to try to keep things moving. And they're not getting a response back. I'm not getting a response back. But they had contacted me to tell me to hold up the CO until it got resolved, which I had a lot of contact, but now, you know, it's.
I mean, all the sidewalks are up to code and everything according to the state or as far as that?
I don't know. I'm not getting a response back.
They were speaking about that outgoing driveway defer to.
I believe it is. I, because that was that first permit that they had had. And their second permit has to do with the lights and the crosswalks.
Okay.
But on your inspections that you and chief have done on it so far, they can be issued a.
We did a major inspection today, mostly afternoon. We have, everything passes, some minor things that they have to fix. We're allowing them to put Protos into the store with the hope on their end that they'll have everything that we've listed fixed for a final walkthrough next Friday to, to finally issue the CO so they can start selling gas and opening up the store. We've talked to Jennifer in regards to the transitioning with the alcohol. I think we have to kind of do some steps here. But I, I also.
So they have their locked area, everything that.
Yes, that all is, is.
It's not an open free-for-all.
That's correct.
Over in Northampton.
Yeah.
The beer, the beer.
The beer and the wine, just go and pull off the stuff.
Yeah, and I've never been in there.
Once I have, I went, oh, this is what they were talking about. So you just go in, there's a bottle of wine there or a pack of beer here, you know, so this is all contained in one area.
I remember.
It's a whole separate room.
Yeah, it's all totally separate.
So are they requi, I just don't understand DOT's position and are they doing more roadwork out there? Is that what they're trying to say or is that what this is coming from?
What they're saying is the, the second permit that had to deal with the, the intersection, the lighting and the crosswalk isn't finished. They are not signing off on it. Now, as of today, Pride told me that they got everything done according to what Mass DOT wanted. I'm going to try tomorrow to call them up directly and email the gentleman at the Mass DOT to make sure that that is actually true. I don't want to get in a position or get the town in a position with Mass DOT saying, don't give out a certificate until this work is done. I don't see how, first of all, I don't see how Mass DOT can stipulate that when it has, it's, it's kind of disconnected with the, the site. So those are some issues that.
I mean, if it's site review and everything's up to code.
I mean, if it's site review and everything's up to code, there's nothing we can do. This stuff, we've never seen.
Well, that's true, that's my position, I don't see how we can hold them up.
My position is we don't overstate anything.
But I don't also want to get the town into an issue that the state coming back to us and say, we told you not to do this and went ahead and did it.
That's not up for them to tell us what to do.
I know, but.
But it's better to have it.
We've asked them for a lot of years.
Well, I think that Amherst would probably have a bigger issue with that beacon not working or not being there than we would ever have based on the number of runs they have. So I don't see how they could push that on us and, or say, sorry, we're not going to do it anymore.
Correct.
Okay, so what do you need from us? I mean, it sounds like we're not comfortable fairly signing this. And we agree, we don't really have any skin in this game, it's between the DOT and Pride.
Make a motion to reject the, what is this?
Proposal or agreement?
Agreement.
Yeah.
Second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then you and, between you and Tim, you'll go back to the state and figure out.
If, if they, if they answer their phone, I'll call you back.
Here you go.
So David's working on the beacon, I'm trying to work on the permit issue. Yeah, so we've got several.
The engineers, nobody has had contact with either one of you from state? I mean, just except for what you had in emails?
Apparently not. The engineering outfit has actually been in contact with me to assess the lawyer.
Okay.
All right, nobody from the state has been in touch with me?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the state engineer.
It's a skeleton, skeleton crew of brand-new youngins that don't, they're trying to figure out their own jobs.
We had all those guys in here and they told us what they were going to do was the timing of the lights at one time and all of that. And for the, for the emergency response units that needed to get through. And I don't even know whatever happened to that.
They never came back?
No, they didn't.
Scared them off. Wasn't me.
But the good news is that if everything goes well, Pride might be open by next weekend.
I have so many people asking, I mean, when is it going to be open?
Daily.
Everybody, the whole region is waiting for this thing to open, they love it.
People from Belcher Town are wondering when they can swing in.
Even with the Kanza, there had to be 30 cars this afternoon pulling in, trying to get gas.
Well, I've seen people over at the electric, at the charging stations.
Yeah, those, those are working.
Yeah.
And did they fix the issue with the sign for the electric charging station or is that still?
Oh, the planning board issue?
No.
Yeah, it's been off, I noticed that night. So at least it's not lit up.
Right.
Okay, so maybe that's their solution.
They have to have something there, I mean, it's, it's a directional sign. So we don't have anything in our bylaws talking about size of directional signs. And it's, it's complicated enough.
It's a nice touch for people to be able to do that, go to the back and plug in, you know?
I mean, it shows where those, those charging stations are, they have to have something there.
Maybe we can put the bikes there.
You know.
You'll be the first across Route 9. Call a Joyce.
Joyce, since they're already 25% with the project plans, maybe it's time to really put the pressure on the signal people to get in here and tell us what they're going to be doing. For the main project.
Well, now it's delayed again till 2021?
They're work, they're working on Route 9, there's usually eight or 10 guys out there surveying like crazy.
They're surveying, but they've also delayed the project.
The bid, the bid won't go out until September 2021.
So 2022. Yeah, so we've got a few more years before that's actually going to get anywhere, unfortunately. All right, so let's move on. Our last thing on our scheduled agenda before executive session will be some discussion tonight on the 2020 budget preparation. And I thank everybody that has participated in sending out our emails. There were some things that Christian had sent us on a.
Priorities and schedule.
Priorities, things, and David has sent out a priorities list also for town hall, capital projects, public safety, DPW, schools and other boards. So does anybody want to start this off? Looks like you started from July of this year, Christian?
I was trying to, well, the schedule, I was trying to do the fiscal, like a general fiscal year. We can do it anyway, we can rearrange it, I just.
No, I mean, that's basically how it goes.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know how we want to, if we want to go through each area or.
I had gotten.
Service one?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is more.
Because that I think drabs the others then.
Yeah, and the schedule, I was trying to make it not specific to this list, but more generic outline to follow. Yeah, I could dive in. So I try, again, tried to break this up into somewhat departments. I don't know if this is divisions, like we want to do the budget, but it is departments so that we could kind of narrow in on things. For town hall, you know, human resources, looking at hiring a full-time director. Also, as part of that, under that window, we're doing the compensation and classification plan that we voted on at a special town meeting in the fall, trying to adopt something, hopefully adopt the plan there and implement that into our budget this coming year. Department head performance reviews, implementing that into our yearly schedule. Accounting, I have us reviewing our current solution. Something that I didn't know what was in a previous list was the audit report management letter. That that's more of like a standard item. Information technology, pursue regionalization grant to implement the laser fiche system. We were talking about that last week, I believe. Just reviewing our current solution, is it adequate? And look for possible sharing opportunities with the school department when things level out over there. Financial planning, just looking at short-range, range and long-range plans. OPEB, possible opportunities for sharing, incentives for regionalization. David talked about a grant possibly doing that. Town charter review, we've talked about, you know, having an administrator versus a manager. Clerk, collector, treasurer, I kind of just threw those there. I know we're trying to.
But we already voted on two of them.
We already did that, and I put those there just as placeholders so we don't forget about them.
Right, and it's not, the implementation's not until future date anyway.
Yeah, yeah, and what, you know, let's not forget about them. And for all departments and boards, really, transition planning as longtime knowledgeable staff starts to look at retirement, how do we prepare for that? I, I think that's a problem we can face in the years to come, just throughout the whole town. Building relationships with our new reps and senators. And then just promoting professional development amongst the town staff and leadership. I don't know if there's anything there you guys want to shoot down or discuss or how, how we talk through it. But that's my staff.
Certainly everything that we try to look at, like every year. And trying to, as David suggested, the rotating schedule. It kind of will blend in with this on, John, last week we talked about.
Yeah, I was. Yeah, I'm keeping up with it. Everything looks good.
Just, just so that, you know, we're rolling over and prioritizing what we're working on and what needs to get worked on next. So that kind of brings you into, did anybody have a chance to do anything with their departments that you're like in charge? As I did have, Mike and, Mike and Mike chief sent me just a quick runoff of what they had for their budgets for this coming year. But do you want to finish this up first or is that just where we're going to start right now?
However, we want to do it, yeah, we can keep going through this or focus on departments.
I think one of the things we need to talk about is we've tried different, we've tried different ways in the past to move the ball forward on some of these things and I think.
A lot of it's financial.
Well, as I said, so there's some things that lend themselves to trying to find the money. So like if we collectively agreed, we really think we need a full-time human resource director, then that becomes a budget issue, try to figure out how do we, how do we fund that? And we also need to be making sure that we have a job description so that we figure out the financing, we can actually pull the trigger on posting the job. But then there are other things that are more long-term in nature. So like when you talk about financial planning in particular, and then also looking at the town charter review. Some of those things lend themselves to more of a work group environment. And I don't even remember if it was last year or the year before, I've lost track. But I think it was last year, we tried to form subcommittees like, and we said, okay, you know, somebody from the finance committee and select board and whoever else, can you work on this? And then another group work on that, another group work on that. And it didn't happen. I mean, some got done and others didn't get done. And we have, we have new players here now too. But, you know, just trying to figure out realistically what we can, what we can accomplish. So kind of parsing out what's a 2020 FY19 thing and what needs to be ongoing. Like the administrator versus manager, to me, that lends itself to definitely like a work group to be interviewing other places that have done it, coming up with pros and cons. You probably want participation, I know there are a couple of people in town who are interested in, in looking at that and doing some lab work on it. And it doesn't cost any money, it's just a matter of forming a committee, but making sure the mission is clear.
Yeah. And two, I didn't say this before I made, or before we started into this. This is a list that I think we need to pare down and maybe pick a few goals for this year. I think this is more of trying to cover everything, but it's way too much to try to actually accomplish.
But it actually, it actually goes into what David worked on and, and rotating of what our priorities should start to be and who's next in line to get the attention that they should be getting. So we focused on public safety.
Everybody was a little hesitant on a building committee and they worked out real well over the past couple of years, few years. And, you know, if, like Molly said, if we had some financial team together to go over some of these, these other points, you know, and look at it one term for a few years, may it may help us on one.
Can we.
Regionalize.
Can we set this priority list and make it a select board policy that we update this, say, by December 1st every year? That way, you know, when we're focusing on the budgeting for the next fiscal year, that way we have an updated, you know, list to work from.
I agree, but I'd back up that date.
Yeah, that, that goes to my fiscal calendar and implementing it, you know, if we can get ahead of the game in July or something, then.
Yeah, like September 1.
Or September, yeah, whenever it is.
It's probably going to be ongoing, just don't ignore it.
Yeah.
I guess it would have to be after a special town meeting, right? And in order to really know what is, say, approved and not approved as far as spending and purchasing and things like that.
Well, I think from a prioritization standpoint, that we can, we can really, you know, you come out of the spring town meeting, the annual town meeting, and then we've got time to be talking about this over the summer. And we can set the goals and then adjust it depending on what happens at this, this special town meeting. It just seems like we get jammed up because everything, yeah. And it's almost too late at that point, you know?
So what's the ideal date everyone's thinking as far as updating this in the future?
I would say for July 1st.
July 1st.
Which would get us into the next budget process, but at least having this for a base.
Right.
And then updating it again in July 1st to see where we.
Hopefully we can cross off a few things over here.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's nice to check things off a list. So if you have a list, we can review the one from last year and say, we did this, you know?
Or we didn't do anything.
Yeah, or we tried.
We tried, but we don't have the funds.
No money and it's not funny. You're laughing, no, no.
My life. Yeah, do you want to keep going through the list or try? Do you guys want to highlight anything you think is important for this budget cycle?
What about David's list too?
Yeah, the rotation.
Yeah, well, I think the stuff goes nicely.
The rotation, which I think, you know, we can, it plays into this. And I think how we would want to move forward to what our next projects would be. You know, I, I did have, we had, I don't think that we're particularly done with fire and police. We made great strides this year, we have a few things on the burners this year. There were some discussions on, about what they put together. Do you want me to just copy these off and put them in your box so that you have them?
That's great.
And have it for the, for the next meeting? They just kind of threw it together for me tonight, but I didn't know if you wanted to get into.
At, at Open, didn't they change some of the laws on that?
They did.
Just lately?
Yeah, so they changed the accounting rules. So we went from Gatsby 45 to Gatsby 74, 75. And the main change is that the liability, whereas you formally could claim that over a 30-year period, now it's all due at once. So on paper, our liability jumped $900,000. The actual liability remained the same, it's just how you report it.
But it's not a funding issue from a cash standpoint, we stayed, of course. So, so my only thoughts on what David did, I can see where, no, David has general government and then public works. I, I think at least from what we know right now and given where we're at sitting here today, I think there are some things in public works that need to be addressed sooner rather than later. And all of general government, I don't think, can, can be addressed in one swoop. So in, in my mind, the human resources right now is a priority that has ramifications across the entire town in a, in a good way, if we can get going on that. And there may be some things in public works, I mean, obviously, you know, we've got the director coming on board and, but, you know, looking at staffing and everything, there may be some things that we want to do there sooner rather than later depending on what the staffing looks like. And then some of, some of the general government may have to spill into, like, you know what I mean? Like there'd be an overlap between the two.
Right.
So that the accounting and IT may actually wind up being deferred. But that we would pull up some of the DPW issues. So I like the ordering, it's just, I don't think it's quite as clean as we'd like it to be.
I think that there's going to be some overlap with division, I guess, no matter what. So I'm not sure how you really.
Well, I think in the broad sense of like the HR, IT, all departments are going to benefit from that.
But that falls under town halls already as far as, or would.
It's considered general.
General, but again, it does affect everything because that's even in.
In the, in the public safety.
It's even in public safety about them talking about upgrading of their software and things of that nature. So again, that falls all, all within the same thing too, so, and with Mike also, so.
Could, could this drive our decisions so that these departments get priority in these years? But they're gonna, there're always going to be things that pop up in other departments that we're going to have to address. But maybe we try to.
Yeah, and that, that's for people watching at home before they start getting nasty emails, why, before I get home.
Better use the mail. Better use the email.
Give me your phone, I'll reply.
Yeah, there you go. The intent is, because right now, we, we issued the instruction to departments to basically level fund every year and then we kind of tweak it from there. So the goal would be to give whoever's ever year it is not those, that instruction to level fund. And that way, we can focus all of our time and effort for the most part on whoever, whatever division is the priority that year. And now there's always going to be stuff with police and fire that pops up that they need, or the schools, or whatever. But like you were saying, Christian, at least we can focus on them. And then when, you know, it's like, it's like the capital projects, there's always going to be stuff in every department that, that is looking for capital. So I think there's always going to be something with budgeting as well, but at least the focus on-
And the other thing that goes with, with HR too, is that we have not, which is also in Chief's bank enables thing, is we have not given step raises. And yet they're built into the school department's step raises, so some people get step raises with the COLA and some don't. So that's something that I think, you know, people have gone for a number of years now without a step raise. And so that again, needs to be looked at this year also.
David, the, the approval at, at special town meeting, the money that was approved for the compensation study, where do we stand on that right now?
So I'm developing an RFP for that, that project. I had hoped to have it ready for tonight's meeting for you to review, but I'll have it for the January 9th.
But are, are you okay with the, this, obviously there's going to be blending and overlap, but are you okay with the general premise of it?
Yep, absolutely.
And as, and as far as that ordering of things based on what we've done?
The only question mark I had, I put a question mark next to education. I mean, I think, I think before we put them in the mix-
Right.
The school has a five-year plan, right? So maybe we should find out more from Heather, Heather Klisch, where they're at, just rather than slate them in.
The only thing I would say is that I think general government kind of needs to be top of the list this year for the HR and the other aspects versus the, regardless of where the school is in their five-year plan, just because of, there's so many other departments that are behind.
Yeah, no, my question was, are they three or are they five?
Oh, sure, yeah.
I just don't, I have no sense at all where they're, where they're at, you know?
Yeah. I can get in contact with them, yeah.
I like this, you're taking on all of them.
I know, I really am volunteering for lots of nights.
He's got a low for the months.
Yeah.
I think we've got, if you've got more clerken to work, I don't know, you may be replaced.
That's right. So part of the things would be budget for everybody, which will be coming up. So that's a generalized thing for everybody to think about. And that's basically high on the list, you know, we're going to start that process now too, so. Getting in their requests, I have a few from both departments here, of what they feel that they're going to need and that we're missing, as is the personnel that we took away from the fire department that didn't actually work for the assistant in the police department to help out with the fire department.
Yeah, that didn't work out well.
That didn't work out at all. And we really need to re-institute even, you know, some of those hours back into the fire department to get some of those reports and things done. So that would be one thing to look at. And again, is it something that's shareable, you know, if we did have somebody, even if you had, you know, a full-time person that would work between some departments, other departments are asking for clerical work help also. So is there something that we could, you know, job share on that one, even if we had to, you know, increase the hours for that?
Well, and that, that brings-
You know, the temp service that we've used on that DPW for quite a number of years now has worked out real well.
Johnson and Hill or?
I don't remember, but Sharon, Sharon came from there and she, you know, she ended up staying, you know, and a few other ones we've had stayed for quite some time.
Jennifer's pointing to herself.
Where I came from.
Oh, okay. See, there you go.
Well, then maybe that's something we should look at then.
You know, that way there, it doesn't cost us anything, you know?
In terms of benefits.
In terms of benefits for a while until we, we see, see-
The fit.
Pick the best of, of the best out, like we did.
Thank you. Well, and along that line, the other thing that keeps coming up and we, we just can't seem to, to make it happen, we talk about is, you know, we have the opportunity to offer internships. And the issue with the internships is that some, somebody has to manage them, somebody has to go to the departments and say, what do you need? What are the skill sets? When do you need it? Bundle it up and bring it. And we've got thousands and thousands of students eagerly looking for that kind of thing. The good news, we have finally have firsthand experience using a high school student for that purpose.
Yeah, how did he, he worked out good.
Oh, yeah, he worked out like the house and fire.
So whether it's Hopkins Academy or whether it's the university, but, but we, we have to find somebody who can manage it. And I keep thinking that maybe that could be a community volunteer who's willing to do something like that, whether it's for the senior tax workup program or just somebody that's willing to take it on.
So the senior tax workup?
Or we could have somebody in town hall sharing in that responsibility.
You know, and since, since we've made some pretty good progress with the IT, now I'm actually on Hadley Art.
Get out.
Yes.
That's awesome.
You emailed me and you didn't even know it.
It's why he's mailing himself.
He's just making sure you were around still.
He was sending me something, he's still aware of it. Now, that, that was another question I had, is that email has to be for SURE, have you been sending me some board things on it?
Okay, so that's for SURE, right?
Yes. The assistant SURE at Hadley Art. So could you just check that and keep those up?
All right, I'll make sure I'm on that.
And that's, that's how I found out you emailed and you answered his or somebody's, I don't know, something happened.
So I know you can't use the senior tax workup for some clerical things that might be somewhat sensitive that you couldn't have someone just step in for a few hours, but is there any, have we had any interest in that program? Is there, I mean, could people be doing clerical work for, in helping filing and things like that, especially the fire department, you know, I know he's got a ton of people. I was thinking here too, I mean, we have all, we're going to have the big document scanner over here, I mean, there's all, you know, I mean, we just need somebody to coordinate that work. Interns or whatever to scan that stuff.
They've got plenty of drafting, we're even Ash.
Yeah.
So I'd, I'd be happy to, if you guys are okay with it, maybe David, Jennifer and I could put our heads together and try to come up with a proposal on how to, how to make this happen?
Sure.
Okay? Okay.
And a human resources person's job description too, put that in there.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, yes, yeah. I, I, I'm happy to do that, yeah. Do the HR piece of that.
Yeah, that's it. I'm, I'm for it, it ain't going to cost us anything. We've got the job now.
All right. So I'll get these to your box or probably can we, I could email them to everybody. I'll email them, email them to you. Let them get a chance to do that, I'll do it Thursday, tomorrow morning. So how do, how do we want to proceed with this now? Because we do have an executive session and someone is here. So how, how shall we do, pick this up again? I'd like to at least touch base with it again.
Are we, we're meeting again next week?
No, not until January 9th.
Because it's still on the-
That we're on.
Well, are we, are we comfortable telling-
Still on the-
-the department heads?
Same for the 19.
You know, that, those series are level, we're level funding.
So local funding or level services?
Excuse me, level, level ser- level service.
Services.
Right.
Well, level services-
Because they have pay increases, right?
Level services, but did we just talk about getting some clerical help in? Is that level servicing or not, not really?
Well, we're, are we going to try to, we're going to try to do the general government this year, right? For this budget and so.
And then look at like the internship and see if there's a way to backfill that or have Mike look at the budget and see if there's a way to hire a temp. I mean, part of it is, I'm always reluctant to, I don't, don't have a doubt that there's a need there, and I'm very clear on that. But I'm also reluctant to just build something into a budget without knowing, you know, exactly what the end of the present-
Well, even if, even if we just did a temp, that would be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there should be a plan for the buy-
There needs to be something there. Yeah. So we can look at that. Okay. All right, we'll take this up again in January.
And so that's enough, David, for you to give everyone information on the budget from us?
Enough to get people going.
Okay.
Get going.
I think that's the most important thing, yeah.
Are you going to discuss that grant on Moody Bridge and that pipe or are we going to wait till the meeting or what are you going to do?
I can give a quick little, so Moody Bridge Road is closed because of culvert collapsing. We have three options on the table, which range from zero dollars, which would be closing Moody Bridge Road, all the way up to about probably a half a million dollars to redo the culvert with cement, three or four-sided drainage underneath the road. Based on some of the conversations, we'd probably be looking at the $60,000 option, which is kind of, which would reopen Moody Bridge Road. But we had engineers take a look at it and then we have a conference call tomorrow about the issue. And so it'll come back probably before the board to decide what direction we want to go and how, how we want to spend the money.
A few of the farmers already complained a little bit because the road is not open and they're trying to access those fields yet.
There's, there's no-
There is a lot of traffic there.
There's, there's more traffic than should be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yes and no, but you know-
To cut through.
We're, we're looking at a lot of grant money to, to take that road off dirt and put it on stone and oil with a good base. And it'll be much easier for us to maintain in the end.
So would it be better to do the $60,000 one?
Yeah, that's, I would-
For now, until we can get the road up and running?
The existing pipes that are in there are galvanized steel or tarred steel, that back 30 years ago, that's all they had. They didn't have the ABS plastic. So the ABS plastic has probably a fif- they said 30 years, but probably has a 50-year, 60-year life expectancy. That's what we just put in on Trin Road, that last pipe that collapsed.
I think it's a pretty good bang for the buck for the 60-year to get the road reopened. And like you said, it probably lasts 50 years versus the 20 that they quote.
So do we have to wait or can we make that decision tonight? Do you want to wait?
Well, we're going to have a conversation tomorrow with Sharon and Billy.
Just put a pending and what they would make the decision?
Well, yeah, I'll bring it back.
If you wanted to.
Well, we could do a tentative so that we don't have to wait till January 9th.
Yeah, if there's no frost, you can go out the pit and get it put in and it's bigger than, than the highway can, can handle.
I guess the, the key would be the board saying we want to keep Moody Bridge open and pursue one of those two options as far as fixing the road, because otherwise it would be close it down, block it off and leave it as it is. So that's, I think, the clarification that we definitely need.
Yeah, and I would be concerned that if you think about the southern part of town, there's only two east-west ways of getting across Moody Bridge Road as well.
And they just had an accident on South Maple Street and Amherst had a water break and it was an absolute disaster down there, you know?
So why don't we do a tentative motion and, I think someone wants to do that?
I can make a motion that we tentatively approve a culvert replacement on Moody Bridge Road to keep it open.
Second that.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Hope so.
Okay. Then we can move forward with it without having to go there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else need to be discussed this evening?
I have a couple of announcements.
We have Lunch With Santa and Mrs. Claus, Saturday, December 15th, from 12 to 2:00. Hadley Elementary School Cafeteria, Santa will arrive by fire truck around 12:20 PM. Touch a fire truck, bring your own camera for pictures with Santa and his elves, pizza, snacks, dessert and crafts. Door prizes drawing starts at 1:30. And so they have a list of, you can meet the fire truck that carries Mr. and Mrs. Claus at any of the following times and location and, and these are on our-
Website.
Website. Okay. And it goes from 9:15 in the morning until 2:00 20, when he arrives at the school. So we can get out and say hi to Santa as he comes along your street.
I hope it's warmer than it was last year.
We also have Fill the Truck, December 16th, from 10:00 AM to noon at the Hadley Safety Complex, 15 East Street. And it's that time of the year, the Hadley Police and Fire Departments will be accepting new and unwrapped toys. Fill a Cruiser Fire Truck, if you cannot make it on this date and time, you may drop off toys to our lobby any day and time until December 20th. Toys to be donated to Bay State Children's Hospital and Shriners Hospital. And you can also bring, if you don't want to bring your toy on Sunday, you can also bring it to the Lunch With Santa that day and bring it to the Hadley Park and Recs and they will stuff a truck for you also.
And they're also, they have kids of all ages and they're also interested in gift cards as well, so for some of the older kids who may not, you know, enjoy dolls or stuffed animals anymore, iTunes gift cards and that type of thing are also available.
And if you want to donate cash, we'll take that as well and we'll convert it to those gift cards.
Yeah.
We just have a couple of, which worries that I wanted to get to, Mr. Robert Page. We have Dorothy Salvatore, that was a Hadley resident, her son Joe lives in town with his family and her brother Tim O'Hare, condolences to, to them. And there was also William Zapka Jr., that was Terry Machinsky's nephew that passed away also, so our condolences to all of these families at this time of the year. And I guess we need to go to the executive session.
I have one more just announcement.
Please.
Um, just if you are watching this on the public access cable TV or on YouTube care about, you know, the, these meetings being recorded and published on cable or on the internet. And right now, the FCC is looking at changing the way that local access community television has been funded for the past 30 years. There is a comment period that's open until December 14th. If you want, you can call Hadley Media if you want some info, their number is 584-1203. But I would suggest that the best thing to do is contact Jim McGovern's office and our, our senator's office to, you know, express your concern about the funding of cable access television, because it could go from being funded by the cable subscription service now to having to be funded by the town or eliminated, who knows what the future is going to be. So please take action to, to do something about that.
Thank you. And I guess the select board would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy Holiday and a Happy New Year, because we won't see you until January 9th. So everybody stay safe and have a good holiday.
There.
All right. So can I entertain a motion to go into executive session, please?
Make a motion that we go into executive session in accordance with MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual related to the DPW.
As Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the board has moved in second, I guess second?
Second.
Thank you. To enter into executive session and that I state that discussing the matter in open session will have an adverse effect on the town of Hadley. And we'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ross Chubbitt?
Yes.
So, Kevin?
Yes.
Yes.
John Paul?
Yes. So, so good night, everybody.